All right, we're gonna start this meeting. Good morning, everyone. Let's rise to the pledge.
I'm thinking it should have been like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Wonderful to have you all with us today. First order of business is the approval of the October meeting minutes. Any changes? All right, with that, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as well.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, wonderful. All right, council approval on calendar dates for 2022 council meetings. And do we have that? Does everybody have a chance to look it over? Do we have a copy of that? Debbie, can you go over it with us?
I sent it to you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we meet, of course, the second Tuesday morning of every month, except one because of a holiday. That would be Wednesday, November the ninth. Do we have a motion to approve these meeting times or any further discussion?
A move to approve the meeting times.
And a second?
Meeting dates.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Nick, our executive director of the Highway Department?
Nick Parr, Boone County Highway. What'd you do? You're smiling. I got a some stuff on presentation here. It'd be easier to show maybe some details. I was had some questions last time about bridge funding. Discuss though, I'd be coming to this meeting for the asking for support of federal aid application, funding application for some infrastructure projects and wanted to provide some more details and additional information regarding how we're doing compared to the study that Butler, Fairman and Cypher did, looking at our long-term expenses for for infrastructure. So it'll be a lot better if you can see the pictures and graphs and everything. We're making some progress. So basically, it was Don's question, I think, asked. I followed up with Elise. She called after the meeting, had some details she wanted, some more information provided. So by all means, if you have questions during this, it's informal. I just wanted pictures are better than me standing here talking. That way you guys don't look at me all the time. You're looking at the TV anyway, so. Just in general, in 2020, this is where we were. I think all of you were on here except Aaron. We had bonds approved. The council graciously went through this process. Total of $5.3 million in bonds in 2020 for for infrastructure projects. Those included these bridges. I know from where you're sitting right now, it just sounds like a bunch of numbers. I happen to know where all these are, but all of these projects have been all the the Bridge 311, 174 and 175 have all been bid. 311 is complete. Bridges 174 and 175 are under construction and are expected to be completed in sometime before Thanksgiving yet this year. Bridge 217, which is Templin Road between Willow Road and 421, plan to open bids with the first meeting, first commissioner meeting of December. All the small structure replacements, which are similar in size and scope to a bridge, are just a little bit shorter in span. All of those are done except MA 33, the third one from the bottom. That's the only one that has not been started yet. They're gonna start on that likely this week. So we're gonna have all of these projects, except Bridge 217, completed in 2021. And that was with $5.3 million worth of bonds. There was additional projects that were included with the bonds, but these were the infrastructure projects. We included some gravel road conversions that we plan to to get those constructed in 2022. We wanted to get these bridges and small structures bid. It was said, I think, during our process that we want to make sure we get these done and the remaining funds we could use for gravel road conversions. So that's where we stand with the 2020 bonds that we're spending in 2021 and 2022 for conversions. There's a kind of graphical or kind of a map there shows where all these are at in various locations throughout the county. It was all done based off of our inventory inspection reports that were done. Those are all the structures that were included in the bonds. So 2022, 2023, and 2024 are clearly don't have any additional bonds. This is a slide that was from Butler, Fairman and Cypher. This is what their understanding was when we initially did our our infrastructure look. If we were to, those bonds rolled off in '25, '26, and '27. And that would be the first and earliest opportunity we could issue new bonds without increasing any additional property taxes. So they were all done in '20, but they they roll off in separate years. So we wouldn't be reissuing all three bonds in 2025. We would do them in '25, '26, and '27. So for '22 to '23 and '24, we are a little bit more limited in the amount of funding that we have available for infrastructure projects to support the development of the projects, construction of the projects. We have to make a plan for what we're gonna do in '25, '26, and '27, but be able to develop projects to get them ready for construction in those years when we have the bonds available, the additional revenue to be able to do those projects. So bridge and small structure project sources, that's based on just Coon Bridge alone. And in those years, we have to still pay for bridge inspections, our 20% match of bridge inspections, and our culverts and guardrail line that we fund, our own in-house covert projects, drainage projects, is all funded out of Coon Bridge as well. So remaining amount for project sources, that's all that's left for those projects. That's what it looks like in '22, '23, and '24. So the average amount for those three years is only about $612,000, $612,319. That's what it averages out over those three years that we will have available to do project development. So that doesn't fund, easily fund the match for construction on local bridges and design and right-of-way. When we're talking about matching our 20% with federal aid and we're matching our 50% for construction on community crossings. So we have, we have to slow down a little bit of the spending now to be able to throttle up when we get to the bonds getting reissued in '25, '26, and '27. So what that looks like over the next three years, we have cash balance. We just went through the budgeting process. We have a cash balance. We're gonna be able to spin down and keep these projects moving. Bridge 192, which is 300 South, just the bridge is just east of 800 East. It's a federal aid project. We're still in preliminary engineering, getting ready to start the right-of-way phase next year and construction would and construction engineering or construction inspection. So we'd be matching our 20% would be coming out of Coon Bridge for that project. Similar situation on Bridge 41, which is Stone Bridge, 200 East up by the county line, Clinton County line. We have to fund our 20% match of all those phases of construction within the next two years. That one goes to letting in October of '22. So we'll have to be ready to write a check for our 20% match when that goes to bid. Bridge 61, which is the one I anticipate submitting in for federal aid currently, that's the one I brought the the total amounts that we need for to put it into the federal aid process to seek federal aid funding. We would only have to fund our 20% match of preliminary engineering and right-of-way. By the time we get to construction and construction inspection, we would then have the bonds. So this would only be what needs to be held up by Coon Bridge. Bridge 401, which could be a future request for federal aid dollars, likely to be next year possibly, would only have to fund the PE, the preliminary engineering 20% match for one year before we were able to get to the bonds to be able to support the rest of the project. During the same time of '22, '23, and '24, we're gonna need to still continue our locally funded projects that we have currently going. Bridge 150, which is County Road 700 West, south of 350, south of 325 South. We have to match our our community crossings. It's community crossings project, what we anticipate. And we have to match our 50%, has to come from Coon Bridge. We don't have any other projects or any other sources of funds. And we have to pay 100% of the construction inspection. Similar to Bridge 148, there's a little more engineering left to do on it as well as construction. We have to match 50% and the construction inspection. And then Bridge 84 is another locally funded project. We've still got to continue using community crossing dollars. So this would be PE and then anticipating to submit it for for community crossing dollars likely in 2023. And then 162 would be another bridge that we could possibly start preliminary engineering. Some of this is, you know, best-case scenario, see how the bids come in, see how the the contract amounts are for our 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 design and right-of-way. So this is best-case scenario, we can still do this many projects. That's not a guarantee, you know, we're not certain we're gonna be able to do this. A lot of this market fluctuation and, you know, supply with materials and things continue to change. This could also support small structure replacement that we're currently in the process on SC 015 that we found a critical finding during our inspection this summer. It's under design right now and we could possibly fund the the 50% match that we need for construction and put it in for community crossing dollars. We also have a couple of local locally funded bridge rehabs that could be used for community crossings as well, Bridge 19 and Bridge 44. A lot smaller amounts on those because of rehab, repair jobs. Those are things we could work in with additional funds that we have left over from some of the other projects. And we can also submit it for community crossings to maximize the amount we can get out of community crossings every year. And then by 2024, we would have spent down the cash balance if we go with this plan. And we will then in 2025 have the influx of the additional bond funds. So when Butler, Fairman did their presentation, when they came back the second time they laid out, you know, I think the council indicated that, you know, we plan to do that as a recurring recurring those bonds throughout, you know, the foreseeable future and that, you know, that the assessed value is projected to increase. And so they they laid out what that would look like when they, this was their slide, of what that would look like in '25, '26, and '27. So I wanted to kind of bring that back to this is what that would look like in the future of where we would be in those three years of the additional funds that would be available for Coon Bridge, for for infrastructure projects, be able to support the projects that we anticipate that we will be doing. So what that looks like, you can see how we were in '22, '23, and '24 versus what that looks like in '25, '26, and '27. A much different picture. I think we we had a really big influx in '20 and '21 with the the bonds. Now we're gonna see a little bit of a dip, but as we come back up and then those '25, '26, and '27. And if you go back to here, you can see how how much quicker they reoccur the next time because they're not all at one time with a bigger gap. Then it goes '25, '26, and '27, and then it's back to '20, '30, '30, '31, and '32. So the gaps start to close up a little bit. Due to the the first year we did it, we did all three bonds at one time. So that'll take our average annual expenses in '25 through '27 to be, you know, what's available or what's available for for projects, $2.8 million on average. So much different picture in those three years that we have that we have coming up. So we just got to work through the next three years of budgeting, but keeping projects moving. So we are prepared to get projects to construction when those funds are available. This is another slide from Butler, Fairman. It's it's quite a bit of information, but what I why I included this one, it was better with their explanation. But Don asked specifically, how are we doing in compared to to what they laid out? Big amount there is important to see is that $5 million of CCMG on a 10-year average. That's a million dollars a year matching construction for community crossing dollars. In order to do that, we have to pay 100% of the PE and right-of-way and construction inspection. We can get close to that likely when we get to the bonds, but with just Coon Bridge, that can't be done. There's just not enough money to be able to match the construction and do the preliminary engineering right-of-way and construction inspection. So that's where their federal aid really is very helpful at the 80-20 match. They cover all phases of the project. You have to pay 20%. There's definitely some hangups with federal aid, a lot longer project, a lot more environmental. The costs of design environment are much higher on a federal aid project, typically bigger projects, bigger bridges suit that much better. So what that was their, they laid out what the goals were, get, you know, get a 10-year rolling preservation plan. We currently have done that. You know, when is the best time to invest? You know, it sounds great to do it now, but we have to have the funding available. We did that with the 2020 bonds and as we get to '25, '26, and '27, clearly that's what we're planning to do is be able to, you know, get those projects ready to go and get them to construction as soon as we can because the costs continue to rise. So their part two of their next steps was continue to use the federal aid, which is why I'm here today, and continue to use community crossings matching grant program. We're doing everything we can with that, but we still have to pay so much of those costs out of pocket to get them to a community crossing project. We are currently doing that, but we cannot maximize it with Coon Bridge rate where it's at right now, $777,000 a year. So it's just not something that that will support federal aid and community crossing projects by itself. It will with the bond funds. We'll absolutely see an influx, but it does not by itself. So then utilize a repeating series of bonds, which now we we see that that is, you know, what the plans are. So to get to where I'm at right now, last month, I talked about possibly looking at two bridges for federal aid projects. After looking through what that looks like for the next three years, we would have to be able to support our 20% match throughout the project and we would have to commit to that basically today in order to submit the application for funding. After looking at those two bridges, it looks like it's a better idea to go after one. And then in the future, we continue to go after federal aid projects. But to be able to support our community crossing dollar or our community crossing projects and our federal aid projects, the the best look I've had at it is Bridge 61 is the best place to go to go after a federal aid project. It's County Road 1,000 East, just north of State Road 32. It's over Eagle Creek. Got some pictures of it instead of talking about it again, but built in 1925, reconstructed in 1965. I can show you what that looks like here in a minute, what the actually was reconstructed. 68-foot span, so you drive across it at 68-foot from one spot to the next that you're over the top of the bridge. The substructure is what's wrong with this bridge. It's rated a four. Federal aid projects, they like to see something rated in poor before, you know, that scores it higher. We had somewhere around eight or 10 bridges that had a score of four in one of the categories, most of which are smaller, shorter bridges. This was the longest of one that we don't have already in development. Bridge 217 was also in that list. Three or four others that we already are getting ready for construction. But this one is a substructure rated a four. Both the abutments, which is the ends where the weight is supported. They both have advanced deterioration in the concrete. The south abutment's cracked under the bearing area. The north abutment's cracked along the wing wall. It has to be inspected every 12 months. So all of our bridges are required to be inspected every 24 months unless they hit certain criteria and they have to be looked at every year. So every September, they have to come out and look at this bridge because of its condition.
Nick, that's 1,000 East. Is is 1,100 or 1,200 the county line?
1,200 would be the county line.
And if that was on the county line, who would pay for it?
We would. The east boundaries we take care of, Boone County does, and the south boundaries Boone County takes care of. If it's on the north boundary, Clinton County would take care of it. If it's on our west boundary, Montgomery County takes care of it. It's that way throughout the entire state. So this is what it looks like. At first glance, you know, looking on the picture on the left, you're like, wow, that deck looks like it's in really good shape. It's a it's a box beam structure. They lay side by side. But you can see the pictures on the right, which is what I'll get to in a minute, is the abutments is where the problems are. So this the section there in the middle, right underneath the box beams is the part that's 1925. So this is bridge that those that concrete is nearing 100 years old. So we talked about a lot during our BFNS presentation about how long do you want this bridge to live? They use like 75 years on a lot of them. That's kind of like the great idea, but, you know, we got 100 years out of the abutment. They had to go back in clearly in 1965 and pull the deck off, added some width, put the new deck on. So we're still, you know, we're 50 years, you know, plus into that. So we've had pretty good, pretty good life out of this bridge. It's really done its its job. And you can see if you look to the far right and the far left, how narrow it used to be and how much they widened it and added that, added the additional box beam width so it can get to a safe travel width in 1965. So what that looks like over the life of this project, right now, the the federal call for project is is construction in $20,27. So that's when this would actually see construction happen. It does take a long time for the project development, environmental process. And this is what the cost would look like for that. The total project cost would be $2.37, $7 million. The local funds would be $475,000. We would be, you know, within the first, before we would get to the bonds, we would have to support the preliminary engineering and right-of-way dollars, and that would be all Coon Bridge dollars. And these are the projected amounts. I have a pretty good number on the construction, not exactly on the preliminary engineering and right-of-way dollars yet. These are just estimates that we've used based on previous projects. So I have a letter of support that needs to be signed by the by the county council. And in this case, it has Elise Nishala's name for the president that has these numbers written right on it specifically. And I would ask that if we're gonna continue to look at this and before we submit our final application, that if there is some changes to the numbers that we could get Elise to then sign the modified amounts, it won't be markedly different. But in in the general picture, we've got to have, these numbers have to match our exact application of our cost estimates when we submit the application. And this is the preliminary cost estimates that we put together. You know, we're just seeking the the council's support for this application for federal funding for this bridge.
When is the application due?
The application is due December 3rd or 4th is the end. I got to submit it a couple of weeks beforehand. It works really good with NDOT. You submit it before they take a chance to to look at it. If we see any issues, then we have a chance to fix it. We don't wait till the last week to submit. They put them in the last week. They put them in a box and they look at them after the call is closed and you don't have a chance to fix them. So I've always been really good at getting them started. Have an additional folks in our office help with that now, get the application started. So then we can plug everything in, submit everything, get it submitted in the next week and a half or so. So they have a chance to take a look at it before the call for projects closes.
And Nick, last week, there was a $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill passed. And with a couple thousand counties in the country, how is it determined how much Boone County and Indiana gets from those dollars?
That's a very good question that I do not have the answer for. I imagine that's a really thick piece of legislation that would take a lot of deciphering. I haven't looked into that too much. Lot of things cooking right now and I a lot of frequently we get those, we'll get somebody to get a synopsis and kind of lay it out for us of what we rely on Indiana counties, NACO and Association of Indiana Counties really break that down a little bit better for us instead of me going through page by page trying to figure out what they meant.
Is it fair to say that we'll expect to get something, the county will?
I would love to tell you that, but I have absolutely no idea. There's a, when you do federal legislation, there's usually a lot of strings attached. That's just my experience with it. You don't, you don't count the chickens before they hatch when you talk about federal legislation. State legislation, you can get a better idea, a lot quicker, where what their intent was and where it's headed. But frequently, when you talk infrastructure on the federal level, level, it can be, there's a little bit of ambiguity. It doesn't mean bridges and roads. It means a lot of other things.
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yes, absolutely.
Nick, when we listened to the Butler, Fairman presentation, they recommended us providing an additional $600,000 a year funds outside of the Coon Bridge. Are those numbers part of your numbers for us?
No, I I've only used exactly what we have budgeted for Coon Bridge for the next three years and what those bond funds show. The additional funding, I don't know what that mechanism would look like. Is that gonna come from, is that general fund? Are we gonna add to the the Coon Bridge amount that's gonna come? We're gonna change the rate, those things. I didn't account for that in this. If that was something that was gonna be done, that would be good information to have, you know, to put in for federal aid projects because that's really good to get some of these bridges taken care of, these bigger bridges especially taken care of. But no, that is not something I used in this at all. Hey, if you want to go back and redo it, I'll bring another one of these. I'll bring two of these. We need to. We can, we can all cut the bridges.
Could you do the second bridge if you have that additional?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it we could, we could easily do another bridge in federal aid and we could also start design of those community crossing. It just really starts moving everything up. So I've got a a pretty exhaustive spreadsheet that's got several tabs and just keep moving years. And how far do we have to push it out to make it work? And that's what I did with putting in the other bridge 401 into here. And it, as soon as I do that, it just starts making where all the locally funded projects and we can't go after the community crossing dollars as well for that. Granted, we can still do it after paving projects, but it just starts to move everything out so many years. Like I've mentioned it here, but didn't go into too much detail. Bridge 310 is in terrible condition. It's still a safe to travel across. It's got a weight rating. It's right over here on Park Street. And we can't touch it until 2028 because of an agreement when we did the Fordi Street with a historic programmatic agreement. We need to go after that one as well, but we can't do anything to it. And that's another one of those that, you know, we just keeps pushing out the timing of getting things done.
I kind of think we ought to have like a a small committee, subcommittee meet with Nick soon to think about, you know, basically, I want to make sure we take advantage of all federal or state money we can get, so make sure we're doing that. And then they look at that three-year, that three-year gap, what's the best way to fill that in? Think about all these options and then maybe we can bring back something more because it's a lot. I can't hardly, you've got a lot in your head and I can't, you know, I can't process it all at one time. I think you got to sit down and and really piece it out. But I I appreciate what you're doing. I think it's it's good stuff, so.
There's a lot, a lot of great planning here, so thank you for guiding us in the outlook. And Don, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I don't care how we do that, but it doesn't have to be a very formal thing, but I'd like to sit in on, just sit down with you and really just go run that through and maybe else that we'd like to.
We need to submit the application in DODs.
This application for these two projects, so this one's the bridge project. I I need the, I need the approval of this. I got to submit it in the next week and a half. I've got to submit the application. It has to be submitted in the next week and a half.
Your bill that was passed last week, 2,700 pages. You need to get busy reading.
I won't be done with that by the time I need to submit the application. So worry about that one at the next federal call.
Do you all want to look over this letter at all here that I'm being asked to sign? As far as any adjustment in the cost, you said you don't think it'll be much.
That I just, yeah, it's looking at the environmental costs and what those, what year do those environmental costs are they incurred? Some of those continue to change. They actually just changed the waters of the US. So the federal, at the federal level, it changed what the permitting and all those things have to do. And that can change how that preliminary engineering cost could change. Right-of-way costs won't change very much, I don't imagine, but it could change that bottom number to not be exactly the same. And I I don't anticipate a massive change, but I just wanted to make sure if there's a change to it that you could still sign. Sign that letter of support to the financial committee. It's gonna be dollars that we plan to budget for it anyway.
Make a motion. We accept this commitment.
Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye? Aye, those saying sign. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the other federal aid project that we plan to to go turn in an application for funding is a sign replacement project. So countywide, the federal dollars, they they put them in different groups so we can go after roads and bridges at an 80-20 match. And we can go after safety improvement projects at a 9-10 match. So we would have to match 10% of the cost of a project of a safety project, which is a separate mechanism of funding that the feds have laid out that we can that we can apply for. So we anticipate submitting an application for funding replacement of all of our warning and regulatory signs. Throughout the county, approximately there's 6,300 total signs. That's just a picture from Sign Manager that we have as a, we had an inventory done a few years ago that we, our staff regularly keeps updated and with iPads and computer and we can drive around and keep track anytime a sign has changed, the condition ratings of it. So in this case, we're not going to be replacing all 6,300 signs. It would be a, it's only for regulatory and warning signs, which are typically the yellowback signs or warning signs, regulatory signs like stop signs, yield signs, speed limit signs, things of that nature. So we, they have to be installed to meet MUTCD retro reflectivity requirements. Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices was what that stands for. So you don't see a yellow stop sign when you drive across the state line or you go to another, they're all consistent. It's Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So, you know, red light always means stop, you know, things of that nature. There's a whole manual, very thick, that we have to, you know, go by for installing traffic control devices. And in this case, they will support the the project not replacing road name signs, other like town signs, things of that nature, guide signs they don't replace, but all of the regulatory and warning signs. So similar to this, you know, we talk about what that sign looks like. You think, well, I can see it. Well, as soon as it's dark out, you can't see it. And that's determined, you know, how much reflect light reflects off of that when your headlights hit it. So, you know, you're driving through somewhere you don't know where it is. So, you know, you're driving through somewhere, you don't know where it is, and you see, you know, a sign, or you may not see the sign, and you have a curve. This would be things that would really bring attention to roadway safety concerns and issues throughout our county. We regularly are replacing signs. We're constantly trying to keep updated what we can, but as far as replacing that many signs across the entire county is not something that we're able to do, we can fund. This would be a whole different operation. This would be a complete project. So, you know, we did our local road safety plan, and within that plan, we, these were the goals that were laid out inside the, the local road safety plan. And doing a sign project, you know, really checks the boxes, checks the boxes of those things that we said we needed to do. And we feel it's important. We've talked to a local technical assistance program, Indiana LTAP. We've talked to the safety folks at NDOT already and reached out to them, and they've already gave us the blessing of approval that this project would qualify for highway safety improvement funds. So we wanted to submit an application, and in order to do so, we got a cost estimate together of, of what those signs are. We didn't do it based off the number of signs. How this has come to is off of square footage of signs, so that's how they're actually paid in the NDOT spec, is by the square footage of how much material, you know, each sign takes up and the length of post is how this is determined against the total project cost. And as you can see, it would be a substantial amount of money to try to do this on our own to improve the safety of our roads throughout the entire county. But with local funds being a 90/10 project, it brings it down to a much more manageable size of project funding that we can do with NVH sources is our plan to support the preliminary engineering, construction, and construction inspection for the sign replacement project throughout the entire county. So a very similar application funding letter that has these same amounts on it as well that we're seeking the approval of. And these numbers are what we plan to use on the application. We've already submitted these exact numbers to NDOT, the traffic management folks down there, and they've already seen this amount and know what we're talking about, so we don't anticipate these numbers actually changing like we do on the other project.
So in most cases, Nick, when it says federal funds requested, in most cases, because you guys have done your homework, you'll get those dollars?
Yeah, they, they have funded every project that we've put in the amount that said we, we were seeking that funding, they have funded that amount.
Thank you.
They program it, and we're talking years out. So they program it, they award based on what the amounts that they have available to award.
Thank you.
Did you budget that $181,000?
Negative. So we would not be spending $181,000 in 2022, or likely might be in 2023 a portion of that. But as you can see, construction and construction inspection's 2024. So the $16,000 preliminary engineering would have to come from engineering services in, in NVH, our local roads and streets fund from next year. Possibly. So I say possibly next year because we, we did this last year for the roundabout project. I still don't have a contract in place for PE to start on it yet. So I could budget it for next year and still not do it until 2023 is the rate we're getting contracts with NDOT. So we have our consultant onboard, we have NDOT onboard, but it hasn't been added to the transportation improvement plan at the state level. So we cannot proceed with work until that has been approved. So even if we budget it for next year, $16,000 would be the number for PE that we would have to do. If we did all of the PE in '22, it'll likely be split out over two years. So more like a $10,000 a year in PE for, from NVH or local roads and streets.
Does it include the post also?
Yeah, this would be post.
Brand post.
So we actually have a sleeve that goes in the ground, and the post goes in that, and then the posts, the hardware and everything. So it's all done by NDOT specs, and, you know, they get paid by square footage of sign and length of post, and they have to include all the other items. So there may be some additional signs that get replaced with this project. So say you have a sign and another sign mounted under it, and you have to take it off, and you wouldn't reinstall a worn-out, bad sign, you'd replace that sign as well, so.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion that Boone County commits to pay our local share, which is 10%. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
That's all I have. I think that's enough, right?
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks for your hard work.
All right, Boone County Justice Commission update. Marcia?
Okay. Many of our work-study groups have met, and we had another meeting last night. Out of that meeting came that the groups are developing questions and trying to get data. One of the questions and concerns is being able to read the floor plans. And I see outside here, we've got a lot bigger, we've got the bigger presentation. So the idea was to hopefully get asked for and get a bigger, bigger presentation so we could read, read the floor plans. But the questions are being developed, the groups are meeting, and some have meetings scheduled for next week, you know, some the following week, and so on and so forth. But mostly, these are being done by Zoom, phone, Zoom calls, and if you've got any questions, ask me a question.
How many more months, or how many more meetings are there going to be?
I would say that's indefinite at this point. I think we've made progress and will continue to make progress. We're hoping, we're hoping to finish up here in that first quarter of 2022.
All right, thank you. Health insurance update. Don, Marcia?
Welcome to health insurance. We've been, the health insurance update is basically that we're okay on, on, on budget. And, you know, really, it's, there's, there's a lot of details that you could ask as far as what, what has changed or not changed as far as health insurance, but I don't think we need to say that today. So I'd say in general, we're in good shape on health insurance, better than we thought we would be.
That's good news.
It's, it's, health insurance is always a challenge. But that's, that's probably as much as I need to say today, unless you've got specific questions.
All right, thank you. And compensation committee update. Anne?
Yes, we are meeting immediately after this. Three vendors have been finalized, so our plan is to meet, interview with them, and I believe we'll be submitting a recommendation to the commissioners, so.
Excellent. Okay, good. Appreciate getting that work started on this side of the year, being into 2022, to hopefully be able to be in good shape for the next budget process. All right, and what did I come, update on ARP, MRS funds?
ARP? If you wouldn't mind coming up to it. Thank you.
I have been working with Alicia Henson with the U.S. Treasury. We've had a little issue with our DUNs number. The county has three DUNs numbers, none with the same address. So to submit to the U.S. Treasury to get our ARP funds, they all have to be the same DUNs number with the same address. So yesterday, I have submitted a change of address and hopefully should know within 48 hours if they will approve that.
Excellent.
When that's done, we will get the first half of our money.
Thank you. If you would please email us with the week's progress, hopefully with the good news that's on our way.
Absolutely, I hope so.
Thank you very much. All right. Salary amendment. Health Department, we have a representative here.
I'll just go ahead and go on. Thank you. They are receiving grant funds. So we just need to add that grant to the salary ordinance for $122,000 so that they can pay as they wish their vaccine managers, their COVID testing people, however they want to do that. They are no longer volunteers.
Okay, very good. Any questions?
Are volunteers welcomed?
I don't know that they're doing volunteers anymore.
Okay.
We certainly had a, we certainly had a great outpouring from the community.
I know, if I remember right, it was a, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars they determined if they did, when they did the math from all the volunteers that helped for that 14, 15 months, and they all came together here in Boone County, throughout the, throughout the country. Many volunteers came in, but here in Boone County, it was, I want to say it was right under $200,000 is what it amounted to, if, if we were going to have to pay everybody. So they were welcomed. Come on, help us out.
That was incredible.
And everybody stepped forward and said, yeah, let's do what we can.
Yes, indeed. So appreciated. All right, so do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve it. Was it $122,000?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. County Surveyor?
Beaming.
Kenny Hedge?
Good morning. Kent Hedge, County Surveyor. We're lacking just a little bit in the Rodman. That's where we actually pay the gentleman to do the spraying of the open ditches. So we're lacking $77, so we're, we've got some money in the drain inspector, too, so I asked for that to be transferred.
I move to approve that transfer.
Great, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, Clerk Faust.
$77.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, wonderful. Thank you for joining us.
Yes. We are low on office supplies. We had to order an additional budget check. That's a reappropriation as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the reapproval.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Clerk Faust.
Thank you.
Okay, and additional from the council. As far as the consulting for invoices anticipated from Baker Tilly for the budget, Auditorium, could you speak to that, please, for us, as far as, this is for the, the financial plan?
This actually is an invoice for about $16,000 for Baker Tilly for having them redo our financial plan that you had requested at budget time.
Okay, thank you. And this is a plan that will last us perhaps for a couple of years because it?
It should last to 2024 is what they anticipate, unless you request another one.
Great, thank you. Any questions there?
So we're just requesting a little $10,000?
Yes. Yeah, right now, there's only about 15 in the consulting line, and the invoice is about 16. So between that and the legal invoices that we have, we do not have enough.
So the 10 is for legal, too?
There's a 10, there's, it's for a total of 20.
We're just doing Baker Tilly right now. We're just taking a, a motion on just the Baker Tilly portion of this additional, and then we'll deal with the other one next. Okay? All right, so do we have a motion to approve the $10,000 for the consulting line for Baker Tilly?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then for legal services?
I talked with, with our TAFT representative, Jewel, on this one, and I would move that we table this one for a month. We've just got, we've got some questions on the, on the current invoices and some thinking about the next month and how we proceed with them. We're kind of getting ourselves started with, started with TAFT and figuring out how to move forward, so I would move to table that until next month.
Okay.
And they're okay with that?
Unless the invoices are going to go away, we still need the money.
Well, our TAFT, Jewel just said it's okay to table that for a month, that not pay the invoices.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those saying aye.